Item 8A is a six-unit townhome on, this is... Where are we here?
Doyle.
Doyle Street. 58th and Doyle Street.[16.89][16.89](laughing)
Hello again. So, the materials board for this item is directly in front of me on a podium. And this is for 5876 and 5880 Doyle Street. This is located on Doyle between 59th and Powell. So, for project overview, the proposed project is demolish existing units, which requires City Council approval, and they must be replaced with new units. The proposal is to replace with six new units, four new three-bedroom units, and two new two-bedroom units. In April 2016, the Planning Commission held a study session. The feedback at that time was there was a question about the feasibility of obtaining 50 bonus points for zero net energy... Pardon me. There is a question about the feasibility of using zero net energy to obtain 50 of the required bonus points for the project. Concerns were raised about the existing trees to the north and east side of the property. And there was some project feedback also for the design for the units and site as well. So, changes after the April 26 study session include the applicant is now proposing that 50 bonus points come from supporting the citywide fund to support small local serving businesses, expansion joints in the stucco facade, an addition of roof decks for each unit, new landscaping and bike parking details, and relocating bedrooms on the third floor of Unit C. Here's some existing site photos that weren't included in the current packet but were included for the study session packet in April. And an existing site plan that is in the current packet. So, you can see all of the proposed buildings are... All of these existing buildings are proposed to be demolished. Here is the previous proposal for the frontage of Doyle Street. And the rendering now, I apologize for the fuzzy resolution, that was just some issues I was having with the PowerPoint. At the top, you can see there's a slight change compared to the previous elevation, and I believe this is related to the proposed roof decks. These are the facades for the center driveway, so if you were in the middle of the project with a building on either side of you, this is what you would see. For the east elevation, which would be the rear of the buildings, the top proposal is what you saw last time, or the top picture, rather. And then, the bottom picture is what is part of your current package. And again, the roof line has changed slightly. And side elevation to the south, so if you're on the south side of the building, looking north at this. And then, for the neighbors to the north, this is what they would see looking south. And there's some changes to the roof line again. So, the renderings from Doyle Street have not changed from the previous renderings. So, there's not a view of the proposed roof deck area. For the zoning district, this is mixed use with residential zone, so multi-unit residential is permitted. And it's a site of less than one acre, so a mix of uses is not required. And it's part of the North Hollis Overlay District. So, the maximum FAR at this location is 1.0. And as shown, the plans are just slightly over that, but it only requires a reduction of 36 square feet to meet the maximum 1.0 FAR. The maximum 1.0 FAR does require 100 bonus points. For residential density, the base number of units allowed here would be five. With bonuses, you could get up to eight. The applicant is proposing six. The maximum building height in this area is 30 feet, and there is no bonus for that available. For parking, the applicant is proposing seven parking spaces, which is within the permitted range. And they're exceeding the bicycle parking requirement by providing spaces within each unit and then a covered guest parking space in the back. For setbacks in the NUR zone, no side or front setbacks are required, and a 10-foot rear setback is required when it abuts the RM zone. All of these are met or exceeded. For the North Hollis Overlay Zone, 15 feet of landscaping and sidewalk from the face of curb to the building face is required, and that is exceeded. For open space, the requirement is exceeded for both private and common open space. And for landscaping, exact square footages are not provided at this time, but it's clear that 10% of the site area can be used for this purpose. And here is the most recent landscaping details provided. So, over here on the left, it is a sidewalk and street trees. And then, there's a setback with plantings. There's patio's behind each unit. And then, there is common open space at the back of the project.
Sarah, before you go, can you go back one?
Yes.
And what is lacking here in the square footage information?
Oh, so oftentimes, well, when projects are going for approval, we require them to outline the exact square footage. So, it would have dimensions for all of the areas where there's landscaping, delineating how much square footage there is in each area where there's actually landscaping.
And is this project not going for approvals?
This is a study session today.
This is a study session. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I've had my agenda flipped. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. And thank you for clarifying that this is a study session. So, for community benefit options to achieve those 100 points that we discussed, there's several things the applicant can choose from. Previously, the applicant proposed zero net energy and family-friendly units for all of the units. That would provide the 100 points required. Based on the feedback from last time, the applicant is now proposing to keep the family-friendly units, but also donate to a small business fund instead of providing the zero net energy.
I have a question. So, I know we briefly addressed this one last time. The family-friendly units, there's no... If it was a two-unit building, we would give them 50 points because they did more than one. If they did two, because we basically, it's over the percentage, and we don't have a minimum number of units. There's a loophole, basically, in the development guideline, is what it sounds like.
Well, there's... You could look at it that way.
I do.
I mean, 50% is 50%, you know, whatever it is.
Yeah.
But, I would also note that whatever the bonus points are that are proposed by the applicant must be approved by the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And in this case, also the City Council. So, if you don't accept their proposal for bonus points, then they don't get the bonus points for that.
Okay. That was my question.
And so, here are the details that Charlie just clarified. So, Unit A design, it's a little bit difficult to see here. At the top is what was previously proposed, and at the bottom is what's currently proposed. And the area that's changed is over here on the top floor, mostly with closet area.
I have a que... Can you go... Are you on A still?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I have a question here, too. So, on Page A 202, when it's the full floor plan that we looked at, the floor plan for Unit 101, Plan A, does not look like this when I reviewed it. It's a different floor plan in the kitchen. And then, when you look at the breakout of them on Page A 204, and you look at the kitchen for Unit A, it's different. It's the one that you have on the screen. So, in one of them, there is a closet or a pantry next to the powder room. And the kitchen ends short of Doyle Street. And in this one that you're showing, there's a longer island. The range moves from the island to the wall. The wall counter is extended, and there is no pantry anymore. So, which of these is it?
So, I would definitely direct that question to the applicant.
Okay.
For the purposes of this presentation, I did not include comparisons that you're talking about of both the complete floor plans for each level.
Right.
As well as the breakout for the units. The ones that I'm showing are just for the units, so the discrepancies would be good to talk about with the applicant.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. So, for Unit B, same idea, the third floor here, but we should probably talk about that later based on Commissioner Bowder's comments. And Unit C, there's... This was what was most discussed about last time in terms of specific recommendations for more windows in the bedroom area for it to be flipped, and that is flipped. Neighbors' comments and concerns, in brief summary, are potential impacts to redwood trees on the north side of the property, which this arrow is attempting to pull out. Also, potential impacts to juniper trees on the east side of the property. Yesterday, a city arborist made a visit to the site and looked at these trees. We haven't received a report yet, of course, because it was just done yesterday, but I believe the arborist is here. Yes. Okay. So, they're available to answer any questions for you after the presentation. Concerns about property line and fence locations have also been raised, and the potential impacts to eastern neighbors due to the height and bulk of the buildings. In March 2016, staff reviewed this at DCC, which is an interdepartmental meeting, and the following issues were raised for undergrounding utilities and placing street trees at 25-foot intervals, which the landscaping plans are showing right now. Increasing landscaping strips to 3 1/2 feet. Measurements were not provided, but it appears to show that. And then, adding a street facing access for waste collection. The plans are inconsistent at this time. And relocating guest parking, which the applicant has somewhat done. For July 26 staff comments, the applicant needs to meet with the building and fire divisions regarding the roof deck, fire access, and accessibility. There is some inconsistency in plans that staff noted. And more information is needed regarding the roof decks, landscaping, property lines, and building heights before moving forward with the project. Issues to be considered tonight are the development bonus points. Does the commission agree with... Or can the commission support the changes in bonus points from net zero to supporting small businesses, as well as the family-friendly element redesigned? Does the commission have any feedback regarding the design of the overall project, landscaping, or unit? And does the commission feel the applicant has adequately addressed the concerns expressed and responded to the feedback provided at the April 2016 Planning Commission study session? The applicant is also here and would like to address the commission tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions?
Sarah, so what is the disposition of the bonus points at this point?
The content?
Well, how are the bonus points... What's the proposal for achieving the bonus points?
So, 100 bonus points are required. 50 of them are proposed to come from making all of the units family-friendly under the design guidelines. And 50 of them are proposed by contributing, pardon me, to a small business fund that is an option under a way to achieve bonus points.
Thank you.
Could you clarify the process? There was... There were questions about the investigation into the condition of the redwood tree, saying that they couldn't really tell what was going... How much damage would be done until the building was demolished so that they could see the roots? But you can't demolish the building until you have an approved plan, so could you clarify that?
Sure. So, I believe what you're referencing is an email that was forwarded to Planning Commission, which for members of the public, there's copies of it right next to our city attorney right there. So, let me step back here. Your question was... I'm sorry.
Clarifying the process.
Clarifying the process. So...
How are we going to find out what degree the tree is going to be?
So, the arborist is here tonight to address you, and we will receive a report from the arborist after tonight's meeting. And then, I think probably going from there based on that information.
Nothing from me. Thank you, Sarah. Do we want to hear from the arborists first, or the project designers?
Let's hear from the arborists.
Arborists, probably.
That's a separate item.
Yeah.
My father and I, Stephen Batcholder, went out to check out the site and the trees. I'm Molly Batcholder. The redwood tree is a very large tree. Two stems, 49.5 inches and 40 inches. And that gives what we call a tree protection zone equal to 64 feet out from the base of the tree in a radial distance. So, that's the part of the area what we say we need to protect. That's the root zone. Roots... Most of the roots are in that zone. Roots can continue out further, but that's in any single construction job, we protect that. So, we did a preliminary root investigation for the redwood tree, found out that there are a lot of feeder roots in the open soil area. Like we pointed out earlier, we don't understand the extent of how many roots there are and where they are. The only way we can do that is if we pull the concrete away and take a look. And that means it would be after the demolition. It is a very large tree, so I think we can expect there to be a lot of roots there, but we don't know for sure. If there are a lot of roots there, the building is in what we call the primary root plate of the tree, which is three diameters out from the base of the tree, so we're about 16 feet out, is where we don't like to cut any roots because we don't want to risk a destabilization of the tree. So, if there are critical roots in that area where the building is going, we propose a slab-on-grade-beam foundation where we can place the piers a little bit closer together, and then if we do find a root, we can move it one way or the other so as not to damage the tree. As far as the other trees, the Monterey pine tree that's on the street, it's a city-owned tree, 26 inches DBH, so it has a 26 feet out from the base of the tree, tree protection zone. The Monterey pine tree is a little bit stressed. We found one red turpentine beetle hit. It's what's happening to Monterey pines all over because of the drought. So, it's critical that if this tree's going to be saved, that there's some sort of mitigation involved in keeping it healthy. That would be the same thing for the redwood tree, that we like to check the soil compaction. And if it is compacted, we like the use of a water jet, which is a treatment where you just punch holes down in the ground using water pressure and improve the soil gas exchange. Roots require oxygen for any sort of function, so if they don't have oxygen, the trees aren't healthy. So... And then, also supplemental irrigation would be a good thing to give the Monterey pine and the redwood tree if it is necessary. There's an orange tree at the back of the property, but it's really not a significant tree. And then, there's two Hollywood junipers in the resident property to the east of this property, to the east. Because the building is 20-foot, there's going to be a 20-foot wide open area, and these trees have a DBH of 13.5 inches and 15 inches. So, it seems like that they're not... We're not going to be in the root protection zone of these trees. So, there's... They probably would see little adverse impact to the... From the project. And then, one glossy privet, 6 inches, is also in the property, and it's not a particularly important tree, so that's...
Any questions?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Can you, on the redwood tree, you provided the diameters of the trunks, the age of the tree. Do you have an ability to just estimate the size of the tree? How old that tree might be?
I mean, I think it's probably better for the people that own the building. I mean, redwood trees are very fast-growing. There's very good soil there, so redwoods can grow like six... You know, I think they can grow like six feet a year when they're starting off, if they have a lot of water. So, it is a very big tree, maybe 80 years, 50 years, something like that.
Okay. And when we're in drought conditions, do the roots of that particular tree, do they extend farther to find water? Or do they, in a compacted soil, do they remain in place?
Yeah. Good question. Roots really need oxygen for anything. That's why most root growth happens in the first 18 feet of the soil, because when you get below 6% oxygen in the soil, roots can't function. They require an oxygen molecule to be bonded with any sort of water or nutrient in order for work to be done, for the root to put up anything. So, first, we look for oxygen, but if we can create passages of air in the soil, you know, sometimes down to four feet, and usually the compaction is, you know, urban soil, that's the... You know, we have clay, urban soil, it's going to get compacted. Clay is the smallest of particles. So, sometimes there's a compaction layer, and then it's not. And it seems to be that there might have been like an old riparian section of that neighborhood, because the trees are very big there, so it's, you know... Trees usually grow big because the roots are able to get out. So, with the water jetting by creating passages down to almost four feet, breaking up the soil compaction, then roots will be able to go down and search for water deeper in the ground.
Forgive my ignorance with this type of tree, but in a situation where there's a lack of oxygen, as you just described, will the roots rise closer to the surface then?
Yes.
So, do you have any reason, or your evaluation, does it lend any credibility to the idea that the roots are rising, so there's likely to be roots close to the surface on this tree?
I mean, I would... I would think with this tree that the roots are fairly deep just because of how big it is. But, the majority of the roots we're going to find probably in the top 18 inches of the soil, as goes with all urban trees.
Okay. And you said that the protection zone was 64 feet for that tree.
Yes.
I didn't hear, though, how close this particular property or the structures on it are to that. Do they come over the 64-foot zone?
You mean the proposed structure?
Either the existing or the proposed. Yeah.
I know that the proposed structure is pretty close to... It's within what we say the primary root plate of the tree. So, any root loss in that area could risk destabilization of the tree.
So, it's within the 16-foot area?
It's within the 16-foot.
So, it's clearly then within the 64 area?
Yes.
But it's even in the more serious zone, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it has a very, very large tree root protection zone, and, you know, it's just a very large tree.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donaldson?
I don't have any questions at the moment.
I'm sorry. Are these trees that we're talking about, the redwoods, are they on the eastern property line of the...
Or the north? I think they're north.
Property to the north.
Okay.
The redwood tree is... Some of the other ones were on the east side, and some were on the property.
On what side of the property was the Monterey?
The Monterey pine is on the... Oh, goodness. It's on the front of the property.
The west-south side of it.
It's on Doyle Street.
The street side.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And how healthy is it with pitch pine? Do you find that it's suffering from that? Or did you just... Because I lived in Monterey County for years.
Oh.
I know the devastation that this is causing.
Yeah.
And it can go pretty fast sometimes. But does it seem like it's fighting it off with the drought, or is it suffering?
Well, the hit that we saw, the beetle hit that we saw, that there was some pitch exude coming from the tree, which means the tree has defense and is trying to push the beetle out. When trees are very unhealthy, all that comes out of the holes is frass.
Okay.
The tree has no defense. So, there was only one hit. But, the tree wasn't looking the greatest. There was some dead in it. The Monterey, or the giant sequoia tree next to it is looking very bad, too. They're going down all over because of the drought. So, yep.
Are those directly in front of the applicant property, or is it the property just to the north?
It's a little bit of the property to the north. Yeah. But the root protection zone will be in that area, so it's just something to pay attention to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I do have another couple of questions.
Oh, sorry.
One of them is that it looks like a proposed tree is a Pyrrhus cawacami. Are you finding problems with fire blight on those?
Yes. And we often say to not plant pear trees all in a row. Fire blight is transmitted by a bacteria that's transmitted by wind and bees, and so sometimes the wind comes and affects every tree. I don't see as much problems with the cawacami as I do with the Chanticleer, the Calery pear. But it's still a concern, and there's cawacami eyes on the other side of the street. So, it might be a good idea to look for another tree just because of that situation.
And generally, we require structural soil under sidewalks and that, but what's your opinion of a 3 1/2-foot planting strip for street trees? It looks like it's being shown with additional cutouts, but that narrows the sidewalk. But do you have a...
3 1/2-foot cutout would be fine. We just want to make sure that we choose trees that are not going to, you know, pillow over that. So, they would be probably medium-sized trees. If you give them a good soil environment where the roots are able to go down, they'll have less flooding and cause pavement damage. That's the reason why structural soil is so wonderful. And, you know, we do like to put the 6 inches of clean crushed rock over the structural soil so that the roots don't have any reason to grow in that area. There's no water holding or nutrient capacity... Holding capacity, so they stay down in the structural soil.
Okay. Thank you.
One last question. The neighbors who live behind the property on Bodry Street came to the last study session, and I know they have two junipers in the backyard. You mentioned them, but you're saying that the protected zone for those trees is far enough away from the proposed site so that they're not an immediate concern for the development?
Yeah, they're not. It seems like that there's going to be a 20-foot wide open area designated between the two properties, and the junipers, their protection zone is about 15 feet out from the base of the tree. So, it seems like they'll be fine.
So, what about light?
Light for the junipers.
Because right now, there are two... There's a smaller structure at the north end of that property.
Uh-huh.
And the house structure that exists to the south. And so, evening and afternoon light, would those two trees lose light? Would that affect them?
It would appear that it would be an issue.
It could be an issue.
You know, tree... Yeah, it could be an issue. Trees don't like change, just like humans.
All right. Thank you very much.
One question for Charlie on this. Is that okay?
Go ahead, ask him.
I have one question for staff on this. Have... Given the age of the redwood in particular, can you recall any other development we've done at that 59th and Doyle Street intersection where we've dug or built something in the last 20 or 30 years where we would have encountered this issue with this tree by any chance? Even like utility undergrounding? I'm just wondering if we have, like, seen this.
This particular tree?
Yeah. I'm just wondering if you know offhand.
No.
Okay.
I haven't been here that long. I've been here 16 years. But I know the utilities north of 59th Street are undergrounded along Doyle Street, and that was done about 10 years ago. But I don't think that would have been in the vicinity of this tree, these trees.
Okay. That was all I wanted to ask.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and give us a presentation?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Aftergood. I am the brother and partner of Jake Aftergood, who I think you met at the April meeting. I have to say, everyone's knowledge about the tree issues is impressive, and they're important issues. And I just wanted to briefly... And actually, before we begin, I also wanted to introduce Tom Dolan, who is an architect who we've retained to take our project from this point to completion. We've substituted out Ken Stockton, architects, and so he's here tonight, is also available for any questions or comments, and is taking good notes. So, the tree is obviously, it's sort of a chicken-and-egg type issue. You know, we can't really know more about it until we get started. Well, we can't get started until we know more about it. So, I would just sort of point that out. I would also point out that, you know, the arborist said that there are ways to do the foundation that won't impact the tree at all, you know, above-grade foundation. And the third point I'll make about the tree is it's not a city tree. It's not a protected tree. It's a tree that belongs to our neighbor and is encroaching in several ways onto the subject property, both in the air and underground. And in fact, it's damaging the wall that is owned by the subject property. So, it's actually technically a nuisance to the current property and causing damage to the current property. And so, the point I would make about that is, you know, while we do want to be sensitive to the tree, and there are ways to do this development that are sensitive to the tree to preserve the tree, I believe that's really an issue between the property owners. And we are interested in the Planning Commission's feedback about all of that. So, that's the point I would make about the redwood tree. And I would ask maybe at this juncture if there are any other questions about that, or I'll move on to the next point.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that some of the other...
Should not be considered acquiescence.
I don't know. I saw in the staff report that generally, as far as the issues concerning the Planning Commission, things like setbacks, zoning, we appear to be exceeding... Meeting or exceeding all of those requirements. So, I guess I don't know if I have much else to say unless there are specific questions from the commission.
Is your architect going to be speaking?
He's not planning to, but he's available to take questions and respond.
Well, I had a question about the building height. I noticed you show it at 30 feet maximum, which I think is the limit.
Correct. Correct.
But you also show a deck on the roof, a stairway up to it, and railings around the deck, which would exceed the 30-foot height limit, and it looks like there's some barrier walls or something. Additionally, the elevations have varying heights, which would appear that some parts of it are higher and some parts are lower. With three stories, it's a minimum of 27 feet, and that's if the first floor is absolutely at grade, and you've shown it that way in these preliminary drawings, but you really do have to have it slightly above the ground level outside the house, and so I think there's a little question here about the building height that need to address.
Thank you. I think we've looked at that issue closely in terms of the building and zoning codes, and I believe that appurtenances to a roof are exempt from the height limit. Maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but, or Jake, are you familiar?
Well, I mean, some preliminary research that I did told me that, let's see, this is from Section 9-4.202 of the planning regulations. It says, "Allowed projections. The height limits for the various height districts do not apply to spires, belfries, cupolas, domes, or other architectural projections not used for human habitation, nor to chimneys, ventilators, skylights, parapet walls, cornices, solar energy systems, mechanical equipment, or other appurtenances usually located on the roof level, provided that such features are limited to the height necessary for their proper functioning." Going on, "Height of projections. Except for parapet walls, such features may project up to 15 feet above the roof of the building in the 30-foot height district, and up to 25 feet above the roof of the building in all other height districts. Parapet walls may extend up to three feet above the roof of the building in the 30-foot height district, and up to five feet above the roof of the building in all other height districts." So those paragraphs tell me that the features on our project are likely to satisfy the height limit, but I'm not an architect.
I didn't hear you say roof deck, though.
And I think that that's questionable. The deck is clearly a usable space, it's not the roof, and the railing is not a parapet, it's a railing. And Charlie, what is your opinion on that?
Well, I'd have to study it more closely, but my initial reaction would be that that would be considered an allowed projection above the height limit.
A roof deck and a railing is an allowed projection, is what you're saying?
I believe so. I would have to look at it more closely.
This is a deck, they could move garden furniture up there, anything they wanted to.
Up to 15 feet above the height limit, correct?
So it becomes habitable.
Well, I don't think for building code purposes it's considered habitable because it's not interior.
I would sleep up there, though. I like the outdoor.
And I believe, you know, this is a study session, so I believe this is something that we can definitely clarify before it comes back before approvals. Any other questions of the applicant?
I just, my question that I asked Sarah, sorry, Sarah earlier, just explaining the why there's discrepancies between pages on the same floor plans.
You know, and I apologize, we went through that very quickly the first time around. Do you mind taking a minute to?
Yeah, sure, so if you look at page A202.
Sure, A202.
You'll see, tell me when you're there.
Yes.
Okay, so at the top left, that's Unit 101 Plan A, it says.
Right.
Okay, so I'm looking at the kitchen, I see a kitchen, that to the right of that kitchen, there is a pantry door opening to a pantry below the powder room. There's a refrigerator, the sink and counter come around there, and then there's an open space with a window. You have a small island with a range on it. And then when I turn to page A204, two pages later, the middle diagram is your Unit A, second floor plan, and now there's no pantry. The refrigerator is in the middle, you come around, there's the sink like you had it, but now the range is on the wall, there's no opening for a window, the counter extends all the way through, and you have a long island with no range in it. Same floor plan, right, with different images?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I suspect it could be that Mr. Stockton, our prior architect, had provided an alternative layout in this, in the furniture plans pages. So Sarah had asked us to provide furniture plans to show that typical furniture could fit in these units, and so I think I remember him saying, but I don't recall exactly, but I think I remember him saying that in the furniture plans, he was going to provide an alternative layout.
So which is it, 202 or 204?
But he's got the stove out on the counter in 202, and he has the stove against the wall.
Yeah, that's one of my questions. There's a pantry in one, and I just want to know, for feedback purposes, am I evaluating 202 or 204?
Which do you like better? I mean, you know, this is one of the reasons why, you know, we've changed up the architect, but I also do recall that, yes, the furniture layouts weren't in our previous package, and I think it's just an issue that we haven't discussed amongst us, but we're open to the commission's feedback.
Okay.
I personally like the, I personally like the range on the island, and even though in 204, this kind of middle, it's still an island, and it still has seating, which I also like, but you can achieve that same seating around an island with a range on it, and I just kind of like that. It's something I wish I had in my house, and I think it lends itself to just more hominess, and instead of cooking against a wall with your back to the room, you're cooking, you know, facing the main living area, which I like. So that would be my preference, 202.
Commissioner Donaldson, any questions?
I'm not at the moment.
Okay, we can come back to you before we let them go. On Exhibit 3, in the landscaped area, you show two squares on each of those grassy areas, a six-by-six in size. What are those illustrating? Exhibit 3? Let's just give you dimension. Of what? So you see what I'm talking about in the lawn?
I don't recall at the moment, but I think it could be that there is a, it's a required minimum dimension in two directions, you know, six feet in one direction, six feet in the other, that there has to be an open space area that at least...
Okay, so what you may be illustrating for us is this is the minimum that you're required to have, and the green is showing us what you're offering?
It was, again, I'm trying to recall, but I think it was that there has to be at least a square area of that size that's contiguous in the shape of a square, or larger, and so that is to demonstrate that we're meeting that and we're actually exceeding that requirement.
Okay.
So the idea is that there couldn't be just a skinny strip that didn't meet that requirement.
Did you go by any questions?
Chairman, I have some questions, if I could. First of all, thanks for coming up here for your second study session. I'm sure that the commission and the community appreciates your willingness to go through this, and I hope you're finding it productive. So in the spirit of the study session, which is what we're in, I wonder if I could invite your new architect to come up to the podium to engage with us in a little back and forth.
No objection.
Hi, Phil.
Hey, Tom. So first of all, I want to start out by saying about the project, I think the landscaping looks great, the selection of specimens looks very nice, and the hardscape looks really good, too.
Chair Keller?
Yes.
Excuse me, I believe we're still in the presentation phase of the item, and we haven't had public comment yet.
No, I think what we're doing is questioning the architect.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, here's my question, I'll limit my remarks to questions. I see that there was, somewhere in here, there's a note that the garbage is accessible from the street as well as from the resident side, and how is, that has not yet been illustrated, is that correct in your presentation?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so that's to be determined, apparently. Now, as I understand it from the drawings, the access to the roof decks is through roof hatches, is that correct?
That's correct, and I've seen the feedback from the building department to the effect that that's not really going to work.
So what do you imagine would be the?
Well, if we're going to have roof access, there would have to be stair penthouses for each of the units.
Okay, and those would exceed 30 feet?
They would.
Yeah.
But I believe they may fall within those exceptions.
They may indeed. The rail at the roof deck, is that, in the current design, it appears to be a wire railing, is that correct? A cable railing?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just coming on to the project, so...
Right, and I imagine you haven't had time to thoroughly investigate it. So I'm going, I have a question about the, the Unit C, the units at the rear, at the eastern end of the property. The last study session, I had recommended potentially looking at turning these units into two-story or two-story-plus units, and relocating the parking into the back of the site, where you now have guest parking, in order to create a lower unit at either end. And I'm just going to ask you, Tom, again, you haven't had a chance necessarily to look into this very carefully, and also ask the applicants if that is a potential area of exploration that you'd be interested in looking at, or is it, do you feel that losing a garage would subtract value from your unit and make it harder to sell?
I'd actually, in general, I would say yes. It would detract from the unit. I think I really defer to my clients here in terms of the viability of it, but in general, I would counsel retaining three stories all the way back.
All right, well, again, I'll just press on it a little bit more. The value that I would see in turning it into a lower unit back there, of course, is that it is a nice gesture to your neighbors to the east. Also, it gives some variation to the massing of your project. Thirdly, it provides a...
Commissioner Banta, can we hold this to the comments section? If this isn't a direct question, we need to open it up to public comment.
All right, very good.
Can I respond, or?
No, he'll bring that up again during the commissioner comments.
Okay.
So it looked like on your chart that you included that we were responding to previous comments that you are going to include access to the private open spaces from the interior of the building rather than just through the garage? Is that, you're going to add doors to that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
That I know.
All righty, thank you, gentlemen.
By the way, I wanted to say that the staff report's suggestion that the kind of news area be more treated as a landscape space, even though it's not technically required open space, is something that I applaud, and we will be enhancing as much as we can with unit papers, et cetera.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment directly related to this project, and remind the speakers that they get three minutes each, and we ask that they sign in on the clipboard to your right. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing that, we'll bring it back to the commission, and Commissioner Banta, if you wanted to finish your thought now?
Yeah, my apologies for jumping the gun there. In any case, I, as I was explaining, I think it's a worthy alternative to consider these back units as being lower, and I think the parking could be accommodated. In this case, it would be outside, but again, that's a decision for the applicant to make relative to the perceived value of the property. But the benefits, as I was explaining, that I think that might accrue to such units is that you would have ground-floor living room units that could, and to which you could dedicate part of the common open space as private open space, and that would give them direct access from their living areas to an outdoor area, which I think would be a, potentially, an attractive selling point for the unit itself. And then you could put a third level on, but it could be a half level as opposed to a full level, so you could still get the full number of bedrooms in, or extra space, bonus space that you're looking for. So that's, again, we're just, we're here obviously not to design your project, we're here to share with you, you know, the benefit of our own perceptions about what opportunities we see may be there. Finally, the treatment, the surface treatment of the project, it appears to be stucco and metal, and I know some commissioners are not enthusiastic about stucco. I personally don't have a problem with stucco if it is artfully dealt with, and what I would look for in your project is perhaps a bit more variety in color. You've got this brick red and then the metal, and there's a certain, you know, simplicity about it, which I guess is appealing, but a certain monotony as well, and it might be worthwhile to explore some variations in that regard. Thank you.
Well, the plans are so incomplete at this time that it's pretty hard to make too many comments. I do think that perhaps if the stairways to the units on the front side of the building and the back side of the building were put on the interior, it would allow the principal rooms on each floor to view out to the street and into the backyard rather than to the side. And I think the building height situation has to be more carefully resolved.
Commissioner Donaldson?
I'll go back to looking at the outdoor space, and I think that on the north side of the building, that's going to be really minimally usable. It's going to be dark, it's going to be cold, there's going to be no sunlight there, and currently, there's no access except through the garage, so I'm not sure what needs to be done to address that, but I sort of, seeing it portrayed as really usable open space always bothers me somewhat. The street trees, I think that, as the arborist said, it would be good to pick different street trees because they're not doing splendidly in our area at this point. I really feel strongly that it would be good to do a better transition to the surrounding buildings. They're buildings that are not going to go away, that are lower, there's yards around, and this is really quite a bulky massing without a lot of variation to it, and having some kind of, as Commissioner Banta suggested, like a lowering to two stories at least of partial, the partial floor would be a huge improvement and would make the outdoor spaces also more usable because of the access to sunlight. I don't think that the entry gate piece is necessary, and I don't think it adds much to the project at all. I think it would be nice to have a little bit wider planting area between the curb and the sidewalk, and a little bit less between the sidewalk and the building, just to allow for a little bit more vigorous growth of the trees. And if there are going to additionally be enclosed structures to access the roof, I also think that that's a problem just in terms of the height with the surrounding neighborhood and the transitions to the adjacent buildings. That's my comments for now.
Okay, so I'm going to go to the questions that staff left us in order. First of all, thank you for moving away from the net zero energy proposal that wasn't going to work, in my opinion, and moving it to small, local-serving business. We have the discretion to approve the development bonus points that you select, and so I would ask you to consider for the other 50 points, since I think it's a lot of points to give for a project of less than 10 units to build, you know, multiple bedrooms and get the points, but not have to, at the same time, there's a loophole here, because at 10, you have to do an affordable housing unit, you start clocking in on that, and so you're avoiding affordable housing, and you're getting a ton of points for multi-bedroom units, and I appreciate the value of adding multi-bedroom units to the city. I would ask you to suggest maybe proposing 25 points for your multi-bedroom, and maybe 25 points to another fund in the city, perhaps the parks fee, as a way of getting to 100 points. I think that would be a good compromise, and would make me feel better about approving the bonus point system that you're proposing. As to the design, I agree with Gail on several things. I don't like the gable over the driveway, it makes no sense. The transitions, I will agree with Gail's comments on the transitions, and I would recommend, if you aren't familiar with, the Blue Star Corner development...
recommend, if you aren't familiar with, the Blue Star Corner development that Holiday and Baker did at Hallock and Sherwin. They, that was an infill that was done next to the existing Emeryville Warehouse Loft Building. There was this very small space of about 22 feet, similar to your neighbors who lived to the east, and their backyard there, and they did a step up where the first two or three units adjacent to that building in those rows of townhomes are at a slightly lower height, and then the, the last units closer to Hallock Street have an additional level to them. I think that would complement the neighborhood, it would get rid of the big box that was dropped in and set down on the lot sort of feel. And it might actually diversify your unit type, because I kind of also have issues with the roof deck and the ability to put that there. I'm, I'm going to do some research on that myself, just so you know. And I think it would be maybe a, a good compromise to have a unit at the back that had a roof deck, but maybe was a story shorter. So just to think outside the box of having this, this complete symmetrical approach down the road, maybe you could add a little diversity, the privacy of a roof deck on a back unit with a quiet neighbor yard behind it that has beautiful trees in it, might be an appealing amenity for that particular spot at the back. I took, I don't want to say offense, it's a hard word, I took umbrage with one thing you said, a tree like that is not a nuisance. That tree is a beautiful tree. It, I understand the law of nuisance. I understand canopies and, and things like that, and walls coming up, and people weed-whacking each other's trees, but that tree is not a nuisance, that's a beautiful tree. And I understand the complexity of needing to remove the existing structure and the pavement pad to determine what the significance of the root bed is for this tree, but there are alternatives that are available to protecting that tree. And I think if you think about that in conjunction with your roof deck idea, maybe you lose a story in the process for that one, that one row of homes, but you get to have a roof deck that has the hatch and the, and doesn't have a 30-foot question over it by raising the, the floor for that particular piece of it and removing a floor in the middle. And maybe you extend the ceilings in two levels of it, and so you have more of a loft feel in it, maybe you could create a unique space with it. Just suggestions to try and make all these pieces fit together. I'm happy to hear you said you were going to add doors from the bonus room to the patio, I was wondering about that. other than that, I think you took some good steps. I will be happy to see, we didn't really talk about the interior of the unit, which is something I always look at, but again, it was not consistent, and you didn't know which one you wanted to go with, so I'll wait to provide feedback on that till we see something that you want to do with that.
All right, thank you. So my comments are, there's something that has perplexed me since this first came up, and you have at the ground level the one bonus room that has a closet in a way egress, and if you add a door, it has an egress, and it's one square foot smaller than the bedroom upstairs. And why this isn't being referred to as a bedroom is still kind of curious to me, and with the suggestions from a lot on the commission here suggesting that you lower your units, it looks like that could truly become a bedroom, and you wouldn't lose a bedroom, you could still figure out how to make a two-story unit in the back and still have a three-bedroom unit, or at least a two-bedroom. So I think there is some things you could do to look at to kind of make this a little bit more neighbor-friendly and actually make better use of your space, because I just don't get why that's a bonus room and not a bedroom. That said, I am the aforementioned person who is against stucco. It's very common knowledge that I prefer to see a building that is 30% or less stucco. Everyone says that, you know, it's, it's an attractive, I do understand the contemporary aesthetic. My issue is, is even though contractors say stucco doesn't leak if it's done right, every stucco in this, in every stucco building in this city, and I'm not exaggerating, has leaked. Some more than once. So because these are going to be condos, you're going to be on the hook for these things for 10 years if they do leak. So I would ask that you, there's a bevy of exterior finishes that can be done that are not stucco. Go up to Portland, I can send you tons of pictures with ideas. The other issue is the, this has to go before city council, and I'm going to tell you right now, Councilmember Atkins does not like corrugated steel, and she does not like flat roofs. So you're going to have to get over that bridge, and if you can sell her on the flat roofs by saying you didn't do corrugated steel, you're probably going to go a long way in this. And then the other finish, the redwood, I like. The thing I don't understand is why you're using such a premium product on the downstairs patios that are completely covered except for the people who live there. They're visually not going to add any enhancement to the project, and you're putting a, what I think is a very expensive finish in a very hidden place. So I would say if you're going to do stucco, do it there, because that's where it's not going to leak. So I also read about the uplights in this, in the city street trees, or the streets, trees along the street. Those do tend to create light pollution with light coming up, and since that was suggested not to be done, I would maybe suggest that you do some small downlighting under the eaves, over the projections from the second story, from the first, like you have that redwood wall there, you could wash that. I like the idea of your project creating some light and illumination in the neighborhood, but if it created less light pollution, but yet still lit the street or the area, I think that might be a good option for you. And I'm glad to hear that you are talking about putting a door from that bonus room, because that is something I, I just cannot make sense of why a person would want to go from the garage, the house to the garage to the outside. And then the sidewalks and the street trees, I'm at a quandary here, and maybe Commissioner Donaldson gave you a suggestion to take more of the front yard of the property. I'm very, I'm one that walks everywhere in this city, and I don't like skinny sidewalks, and I don't like sidewalks where they're three feet, then they're two and a half feet, then they're three feet, they're two and a half feet. You know, a sidewalk for me is a means of transportation, not a form of exercise or recreation, and when I have to zigzag back and forth to go a block or something, I find that very, very irritating. And I really think that we need to make our sidewalks as wide as possible, so looking for ways to certainly create a, a place that the new or the existing street trees can thrive, but yet also creating space for the pedestrians to, to thrive is also very important. And with that, I think that's all of my comments. I did, I did want to say that I really appreciate the front of the, the project, I love the size of the windows. Oftentimes, we see just like a minimum of very small windows. Again, if you look at redesigning this project, I agree with Commissioner Cardoza that maybe you could put some living space or place where people live that could use those or enjoy those windows rather than just having staircases there. So we don't mean to give you a wholesale redo of your project, but it looks like there are some issues. And the redwood tree is an issue. I thought of the encroachment piece myself. I have a friend who lives at the neighbor's redwood tree in the front of his house, but in today's environment, where trees are struggling to live, and we need the carbon sequestering, even if one single tree, I really think we need to do whatever we can to protect our trees. And if that, you know, if you do take into consideration putting only two stories back there, then that makes your foundation a little bit more doable, perhaps. So I think there's kind of quite a few win-wins that you could look at in that. So as unfortunate it might be, we might be directing you to do a wholesale redo of the project, or at least a very good portion of it, but that's our opinions. Anything else?
Just one thing I noticed on your landscaping in the little private patios, you had like the projecting rocks. If you were planning on having children there, I, maybe you should rethink that piece of it.
Chair Keller?
Yes.
If I may, there's one point I'd just like to underline, which I think we probably didn't emphasize in the staff report, which is, and for the benefit of the applicant and the community as well, the, this is a discretionary approval on the part of the planning commission and ultimately the city council. And so it's absolutely, of course, necessary that all of the zoning requirements be met, such as setbacks and height limits and things like that. But beyond that, there are discretionary findings that you must make, which requires some judgment. For design review, which this project requires, one of the findings is the project is of a high design quality that is compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. And for the conditional use permit, which is another permit that this project needs, there are a number of germane findings, including that the location, size, coverage, density, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed use will be compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding area, including neighborhood character, street design and capacity, safety, noise, and lighting. Yeah. And so that those, among other findings, are things that you must be able to make in order to be able to approve this project, and those are obviously judgments that you will have to make on this project, regardless of whether it conforms to the height limit exceptions and all those kind of technical things that can be measured. You need to be able to make those findings.
And did we at least touch on some of those things? I think the character of the neighborhood and the finishes, we did.
I think so, yes, I think you did. I just want to make it clear that a project doesn't just automatically get approved because it meets every provision of the code that can be measured. This is a discretionary permit that requires bonus points, it's above the base level, it's demolishing existing residential units, so there's judgment that has to be exercised here when you, if you decide to approve this project. And it's your judgment that is what matters.
So I would just want to reiterate to the applicants that, to me personally, the scale of this, excuse me, the scale of the surrounding neighborhood is really important, and transition to the scale of the surrounding buildings, and also preservation of the trees that create such a character in that neighborhood are very, very, very fundamental things, in my opinion. So moving forward, you should take that into account.
And again, that touches on the discretionary and the judgment of the commission to, to make those findings, so it's kind of important. That's why I was hoping that we gave you enough to go on tonight of the things that, you know, are within our jurisdiction and our judgment, that would make us look favorably on the project, and that might be why a lot of changes might need to be made. Okay, anything else?
Does the applicant have a question?
Yes.
Come on up. You have to come to the microphone.
Thank you very much. Just very briefly, we really appreciate all of this feedback at this study session. I guess the question we would have from this point going forward is, you know, we will take this feedback and incorporate it into our plan, are we able to get an up or down vote at, at the next stage, assuming, you know, we either have addressed that or not? Or are we required to wait for another study session, which this time took us four months?
The decision is up to you. If you believe you've taken everything that we've said, and you know what we're serious about, and what might be something we could wiggle around a little bit on, if you're comfortable with that and you want to come back with a project for approval?
Yes.
That's your decision.
I understand.
If you feel like we've requested a lot of you, I would recommend another study session, even though it's going to delay your project, but for you to come for approval and not get that, you're going to have to also take this to city council. We don't get to approve of the project, we get to forward a recommendation to city council. And I think city council is going to be a little bit more difficult on some of these issues than we are.
Sure.
So that's just my suggestion.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for the clarification.
I might also suggest that we consider having a study session at the city council as well.
Could be a good idea, yeah, that we'd really get their feedback, too. Yeah.
Or it comes to them.
Would you recommend they take this or a newer, newer iteration of this?
I think they should take your, your feedback and work with that and come up with something.
That's what I would suggest, too.
Right.
All righty.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to take about a five, 10-minute break and come back and finish our last two items.